So, good morning everybody and welcome to this meeting of the Economic Development, Skills and Culture Committee of Sheffield City Council. The meeting today is open to the public and it's going to be webcast and the recording will also be available to you later through the council's website. It is possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast the meeting. We have received no petitions, statements or questions from members of the public for today's meeting. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode. There is no fire test plan today. As usual, if there is an emergency, please take instruction from the town hall staff. The assembly point is in Tudor Square. One item to note, item nine, appendix one, is not available to the public. It's a closed appendix because it contains exempt information as described in paragraph three, Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act. If members do wish to discuss any of that information and you're perfectly entitled to do that, we will need to ask members of the public and press to kind of leave for that part of the meeting and we'll have to turn the So, my name's Martin Smith. I'm Chair of the committee. I'm also councillor for Doran Tockley Ward. If I could ask officers and members to introduce themselves.
Sherry Grant, Assistant Director for Legal and Governance.
Nikki Balefield, councillor for Firth Park Ward.
Good morning, Ibiwala, councillor for Another Regent Sharrow and also the Deputy Chair of this committee.
Good morning, I'm sorry I'm late. Councillor Sophia Saheb Bengey Ward.
Morning everyone, councillor Tony Downing from Mossborough Ward.
Morning councillor Denise Fox, spokesperson for the Sheffield City Council, Sheffield City councillors and also burly councillor.
Henry Notted, councillor for Hillsborough Ward.
Good morning Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Simon Clowen Jones, councillor for Beechworth and Greenwall Ward.
Okay, thank you very much colleagues. We have no apologies for absence. As I've already mentioned, one item, item nine, appendix one is not available. Declarations of interest. Do any members wish to declare an interest in any items of business on the agenda? Nikki?
It's not a financial interest but just for transparency, for when we get to the culture strategy, I'm a trustee of the showroom workstation cinema and workspace in Sheffield.
Great. I think we're all interested in culture. Any other declarations of interest? Okay, thank you very much. So, minutes of the previous meeting which is on page eleven of the pack. Does anybody wish to raise any items or can we approve them as a correct record of the meeting? I'm seeing nobody indicating so I'll take that as approval. Okay, thank you colleagues. As I've said before, we have, excuse me, no petitions, questions or statements from members of the public and no members' questions, which brings us on therefore to item seven, which is the work programme. Fiona, do you want to just give us an introduction on that please?
Sure. Good morning everybody. So, this item two is to update you on any changes to the work programme since our previous committee meeting. If you look at appendix one which is on page twenty of your pack, you will see that there's been two new additions to the work programme. One is for today's meeting on the multiply project and one is for December's committee on city brand development work. There are also two minor amendments to the work programme. Please note that the work programme is a live document and feedback and input from members is encouraged. Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions? Barbara?
Thank you Chair. I mean, every committee meeting I've attended always focuses on the lack of skills. This document is no different. It says, you know, skills lack within the region but I don't know what skills are lacking. And I know there was meant to have been some kind of sort of look at it last year but I haven't seen the report. So, do we actually know what skills we already have within the city area? Do we know what are needed to service our economy in the future going forward? Do we need, I mean, what I'm asking for is, do we need a skills audit so we know what we've got, what we need to build on, what gaps we have to fill? Because it seems to cut across all the council. Thank you. So that's to add to the programme if we can.
Thank you Barbara and that's a valid question. I'll take Nikki's indicating.
Thank you Chair. I suppose thinking back to the employment and skills strategy, the last draft that came to us, I think it was in that, was it in that or the growth plan? I can't remember. There was the analysis that had been done by the, oh, what are they called? Something cities group.
It was a research agency.
Yes, a research agency. And that had links to that dashboard that shows us benchmarked against other core cities in terms of the foundation economy and then the other bits. So I think that, to an extent, that is there. But I agree, it's about what comes next in terms of the sort of priorities identified in the growth plan and how we make that happen. And just, I was going to bring up anyway, given that there was the announcement in the budget yesterday about the National Skills Agency, which, you know, in theory a good thing, given how skills seems to be sort of, there's a regional bit, a local bit, but quite fragmented in terms of who has responsibility. I think I'd appreciate a briefing on, once that becomes clear, how that's going to work, what that means for us and how we can use it to the city's benefit.
Yeah, thank you. That's elaboration what I was trying to say because we need a clear document, not just for this committee, but I think it would benefit the whole, all the committees in Sheffield. Because, I mean, things change so rapidly, certainly since that was sort of, if you like, sort of produced. And we need to be abreast of things to sort of take advantage of what's, or the problems coming down the line as well.
Okay, so I think we've got cross-party agreement on that. If we could note that Fiona and Action and Officer have come back probably to the group spokesperson's meeting initially and then we can hammer out exactly what we want to bring to the committee. Is that okay? There were two items I wanted to raise in the work programme. We have an item on the LGBTQ quarter and it says something that there are going to be workshops for councillors prior to that. We haven't had the workshops yet so if we could have an action for somebody to tell us when those are likely to be, that would be helpful. I was also going, I also recall discussions with group spokespeople around the possibility of bringing in item to the committee on the small business sector in Sheffield. We tend, when we have presentations on the business sector in Sheffield, to focus on the bigger businesses. So at some point in the work programme, I think, a more deep dive on the issues facing small business might be helpful. I think we have a relatively thin agenda in February or March, so if that were possible, Fiona, if you could, yeah, that'd be great. Any other items, suggestions for the work programme? Okay, thank you very much. So that brings us first, to the first substantive item, which is item eight in your pack colleagues, page twenty-five, on the culture strategy. And I believe Katie is presenting that for us today. Thank you.
Thank you Chair and committee. We have got a few slides to accompany the short presentation we're going to do. But I just want to say firstly, we're really pleased to be here today to present the final draft of the culture strategy for Sheffield. And as you're aware, it's a piece of work that was commissioned by yourselves back in September twenty twenty two. And everybody here, as part of the committee, has provided really strong kind of feedback, guidance, leadership and input into that process over that time. So that's where we've got to today of the last twelve to twenty-four months of, you know, a really detailed process and lots of involvement from this committee. So thank you for that. We're here today to ask for your approval and to publish that report, that strategy and to take it through to publication and dissemination. And then to support us really beyond today with the ongoing work to activate and deliver that strategy in partnership with the sector. So there's clearly much more work to do, but the strategy itself is a really great milestone for us. So myself and Sarah Sharp, who's the culture manager in the team, firstly just don't want to take all the credit for the work because I've only been in post for a few months and Sarah a little bit longer than me. So a really big thank you to the project team that worked on the strategy. So Kate Brindley and Tom Agar, that you both, you all probably have met over the course of the process. And also from Opus Independence, we had Jo, Ruth, Ola and Rachel, who did a lot of the legwork and facilitation of the consultation process as well. So a really big thank you to them. I also just want to acknowledge that this is a culture strategy for the city. So it's been massively collaborative in its approach. So we've worked really closely with a really broad range of partners and stakeholders. And we have brought a bit of a culture posse with us today. So we've got quite a few guests in the room that I just want to acknowledge and say thank you to. So we've got quite a few members of the task and finish group that worked on the culture strategy, the culture consortium, the culture collective, and also people that are representing their own organisations, specialisms and communities. So it's just a real demonstration that we've got the whole sector behind us and that the culture sector and our wider stakeholders are really committed to delivering this strategy together. So just a little bit of a name check of people that are in the room to say thank you. And there were more people who couldn't make it or wanted to make it and we kind of got to politely decline because we would have had a room absolutely run full of partners and stakeholders. So Roger Bateman, Sheffield Hallam University, Linda Bloomfield, Rivlin and Co and also the Montgomery Theatre, Sonia Gale from the African Heritage Forum and Sheffield Race Equality Commission, Sarah Faulkner from Faulkner Associates, Martin McCurvy from Sheffield Property Association, Liam O'Shea from No Bands Festival, Joe Towler from Music in the Round and Oliver Tsamo from Sedaka, who have all are, you know, have been absolutely amazing in terms of just the breadth of insight that they've given, their expertise and the contribution that they've made to developing the piece of work. So a huge thank you to them and to everybody else who isn't in the room today. We're just going to give an overview of some of the key elements of the culture strategy. I know you've been aware along the process of the work that's been going on, but really highlight why it's important now and look ahead to what comes next and kind of how we're going to use the strategy to galvanise and inspire action if approved today. So in terms of context, I really feel this is a moment of opportunity for Sheffield, that the culture strategy is a really significant milestone. Its purpose is to be a guiding vision for culture in Sheffield for the benefit of everybody that lives in the city, that visits the city, that works in the city and that has any connection to Sheffield at all. As well as supporting the sector itself and looking to the sector organisations and the culture sector, we're really passionate that culture can have a really positive impact on people's lives. So it has benefits for our communities, our residents, our children and young people. And it also draws people to the city as tourists, as visitors, investors, businesses and more. It's not limited to high art and I know I've had lots of really great conversations with different members and different officers as well about what does culture actually mean. But it is a shared everyday experience. It means different things to different people. It is important to the lives of ordinary people and it's got very kind of universal positive impact. We really want to focus on that as well. The strategy is going to provide a framework to help us realise our ambitions around culture. It is connected to all of the other strategy work that's been going on and some of the kind of strategic plans that we've already got in place. So it connects to the council plan, the city goals, it connects to the growth plan, it connects through to destination management plan, the heritage strategy, the sport and leisure strategy and the emerging major events plan as well. I think it's really important that we have a strong, robust and evidence-based cultural strategy. It is really key that we demonstrate how that plays a part into the development of our city economically, relevant to this committee, but also in terms of that social impact that I've already mentioned. We know that Sheffield currently receives less national funding for culture than other core cities and that's been a real driver really for the strategic piece of work. We will use this to develop and bid for funding. We will use it to continue to have strategic conversations and partnerships with SIMCA but also through to Arts Council England and private and public sector funders as well. It feels like it's the time for us to take a much more strategic approach to culture and also to continue that collaborative ethos that we've got in the city to achieve our plans. And from what I've seen in the time that I've been here and kind of what I've heard from all of the conversations that have led to the development of the strategy, I think the city is absolutely ready to step up and to make that happen. Go to the next slide please, thank you. So I've illustrated already the number of partnerships that have been involved. This slide just adds to that in terms of, it's been a very, very detailed consultation process. We've involved councillors, leadership of the council, colleagues across the council and the culture and creative sector and our wider partners and stakeholders. It was a really key commitment at the beginning of the process to develop in consultation and collaboration with the city and with partners and to make sure that all of the passion, knowledge and expertise across the city was captured and fed into the strategy document. So we have reached over a thousand people during that consultation process. We've had thirteen online and in-person events, fifteen one-to-one interviews and three online surveys using the Have Your Say platform. And it was really important that we engage people and ask them the difficult questions. So what is working, what isn't working, what is our potential as a creative and cultural city? And those kind of questions have been at the forefront of all of that consultation work and that's what's fed into the missions and the work that you now see in the document in your pack. So everything's kind of been distilled. As you can imagine, a lot of content, a lot of different voices, a lot of kind of material to work through. Tom Agar in particular, a shout out for the huge work he's done to edit and edit and edit and get us to the document that we've got today. Next slide please. So, as you'll be aware, we've now got a strategy in three parts. So we really took on the feedback that the initial report that you saw on the strategy document in draft was a very long report, a very long piece of work and we've wanted to kind of break that down. So the main culture strategy includes our three creative missions, our values and our collective leadership aspirations. And it's got a summarised high level delivery plan, which we'll come on to in a moment about the next steps. There's also then a cultural audit, which backs up that strategy document and a detailed engagement report. So you can see all of that consultation that took place documented as well. I think it's really important that that process is something that the Arts Council, for example, have really complimented us on and have really kind of showcased Sheffield for being, you know, at the forefront of taking a very collaborative approach. So we have three missions. They are ignite, accelerate and elevate. We have three values then that accompany those and these are the values that we expect everybody that's involved in delivering the culture strategy to be aware of and to embrace. So that's inclusive and welcoming, collaborative and mentoring, and open, transparent and accountable. And then there are ten outcomes which align with those missions and provide the structure for the high level delivery plan. So those outcomes are the things that are going to really focus on our priority areas and our key work streams and some of the iconic projects that we know are happening in Sheffield and are coming up in the future. And this is where there's now further opportunity for everyone in this committee but also outside of this room to engage with us on the culture strategy and work collaboratively as we move into delivery and implementation. So we really want to work together. We want to hear from people that want to be part of its activation and implementation. There's a real opportunity at the moment and potential for us to agree those priorities and to talk about what we deliver in that first year particularly. But also, it's a ten-year strategy with a long lifespan, kind of where do we go and where do our ambitions lie for the future? I'm going to stop there. Next slide please first, as we move to the blue slides and pass over to Sarah, who's going to talk a little bit about where we are now and the next steps from the strategy document.
Yeah, so as well as developing the new culture strategy over recent months, it's also important to highlight the other ways in which the council have been supporting the sector and the work of the previous and current culture team. There has been a huge amount of work already happening alongside this. So I'm going to briefly touch on some of the funds and schemes that have been running. The cultural pipeline fund managed by Jo Wingate has awarded two hundred and sixty-six thousand pounds so far. The total funding request across the two rounds was over one million, which has shown that there is a strong demand for another round. This fund provides vital development support in the growth of business, feasibility and fundraising plans that will help companies to do important and often unfunded organisational development work. We are starting to see the results of this work come to fruition as we're getting feedback from organisations about the difference the support is making to them, though the full evaluations are not due back just yet. The creative communities funding has delivered a hundred and eighty thousand to twelve organisations delivering community events across Sheffield. I particularly loved visiting Grimes Thorpe neighbourhood community surface developed with Green Top. The joy of the young people involved was evident to see as they paraded around their streets. The fund's aim was to help address inequality of access to the arts across the city. Evidently, arts weren't being funded to take place in many areas of the city and within many communities. The project has been a resounding success, though we know more support is needed. Fifty-six bids were submitted and only twelve organisations were able to be funded. This fund was administered through Site Gallery, which helped to improve relationship between different organisations with Site Gallery, supporting various organisations through the process and also improving the capacity for delivering funds within the council. The Sheffield Showcase SBF-funded programme delivered a hundred, or is delivering, a hundred and eighty-nine thousand pounds worth of funding to various cultural organisations in Sheffield and formed match funding to a placed partnership bid to the Arts Council. Although this bid was unsuccessful in securing further match, this funding has delivered a strong programme of work from Sunrit Culture Group to Migration Matters Festival. The low carbon community and culture funding has so far awarded just under one million pounds of funding through forty-seven awards. This has been a challenging fund to deliver in some respects due to the instability of many of the culture organisations in precarious short-term tenancies. This is something we hope to address in future cultural capital asset mapping exercises that we will be doing so we have a better information to help support the sector. We hope that we can review and expand these schemes in twenty twenty-five. A lot of feedback has around how longer, more sustainable, long-term funding would be of utmost importance to the sector. So we are also hoping this is something that we will help to draw down more funding from larger national bodies in order to do. Which brings me on to our next steps. Next slide please. Within the approval of this committee, the culture team and wider culture sector are ready to move forwards with some identified next steps which will launch and activate the strategy. We hope to disseminate the strategy widely and hold a thank you event for everyone who has engaged in the process over the past year. This is also an opportunity to continue the engagement with the sector and expand it too. We will be launching the culture strategy more widely in the spring alongside heading into a period of activation events. These activation events will take place from January to March twenty twenty-four, using some of the remaining Sheffield Showcase SBF funding and will be catalysing the delivery of the culture strategy, picking up on the immediate priority themes and opportunities that can be developed to support the sector. Evaluation. To know how we have successfully started to deliver the strategy, we were tendering for the evaluation baseline for the strategy. So we then have a set of parameters to review against on an annual basis. By next April, we hope to have future funding in place to be able to roll out future grant schemes as well as a more developed delivery plan, which we are aiming to flesh out through further involvement and consultation with the sector, probably using the Have Your Say platform, which has been very successfully used so far. As the sector will be the key partners in the delivery plan, they will be instrumental in this process. More work will be ongoing to look at the collective leadership of the sector and trial new ways of working. This work will also be taking place at the start of twenty twenty-five alongside consultation about a digital hub for culture in Sheffield, which will help to share information and opportunities within the sector. Next slide please. So this brings me on to the priorities for twenty twenty-five. The new culture strategy is ambitious in its scope and will be important for us to focus on some key priorities as we move into the first year of delivery and activation. These are some of the areas that we will prioritise as the council culture team with partners in the sector. A focus on children and young people has come out across consultation as a clear priority that can help bring wider art form areas together. We would like to support Create Sheffield and other sector delivery partners to better engage with this work and bolster relationships directly with schools. We are also seeing how music education is a current and growing strength in the city alongside the launch of the South Yorkshire Music Education Hub and Harmony Works Project. We love their ambitious target around turning Sheffield into a city of half a million music makers. And we want to see the rest of the sector also realise their ambitions to engage children and young people too. We are excited to see Rotherham's Children's Capital of Culture being delivered in twenty twenty-five and will be working out how we can support the legacy that comes from this year-long programme. There were already discussions of South Yorkshire, South Yorkshire-wide children, young person focused work beginning, currently looking at early years. Creative health is another area that can link across the sector with the formation of the South Yorkshire of the South Yorkshire Creative Health Board. There is also work growing on a more local level to match this with the Sheffield Creative Health Board starting to form. This work is putting a new name on what vital community and cultural organisations have been doing for decades, and it's now getting the recognition and support that it needs to grow. A key aim in this area is to improve the data gathering and reporting of the health benefits of culture on a local level. Sheffield Hallam have already been doing a great work on this through their research into the model that tracks the positive impacts of Park Run, and they are hoping to expand this model to an arts project as the next step. Beyond these few areas, we have many priorities to focus on as listed in on the slide, ranging from access to heritage. We have ambitious targets and expect a wide-ranging delivery plan, and we hope this work can be grounded in a bid to Arts Council England's Place Partnership Programme. This will help to shore up these priorities whilst helping to focus on how we can best launch the first year of the delivery of our culture strategy. SIMCA will also be a key delivery partner in our strategy, and we will work with them to bring the culture strategies across South Yorkshire together and improve investment in culture in the region. So to summarise, this culture strategy sets out an ambitious transformative vision where creativity fuels opportunity, connects communities and makes Sheffield a beacon of cultural excellence, one where every resident, visitor and creator finds inspiration, belonging and the power to shape a better future together. Now is the time to start on that journey.
Thanks.
Next slide.
Is there more? Are we done?
No, questions, comments and feedback, we're done, thank you.
Follow that, I saw. Thanks a lot for that and thanks to everyone involved in what was clearly been a huge amount of work going into this. Some members of this committee were lucky enough to attend the Sheffield Business Awards recently, and one message that came through at that event loud and clear was that our cultural offer as a city is really important to local businesses in terms of being able to attract and retain high-skilled, highly mobile part of the workforce and, you know, encourage people to come and settle in Sheffield. Do you think the strategy goes far enough to engage with the private sector in Sheffield in terms of leveraging that message that's gone out and drawing down, I want to say dynamism, what I mean is funding?
I've got Sarah waving from the background, so we'll invite one of our guests to contribute.
Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself first, Sarah?
So I'm Sarah Faulkner and I'm very proud to be the Chair of Sheffield Culture Collective, the compact. So as you might, some of you might remember, in twenty twenty-two we came and we presented, Jo and myself presented, the cultural strategy that the collective had put together because Sheffield as a city didn't have a strategy. So I'm absolutely delighted that we're at this point now, a couple of years later, to actually have that strategy. It reflects, it's broad and deep, but to answer your question, one of the, I suppose, over these last few years, our compact has actually had or gained a reputation for being the head of many other compacts in the UK, in England, of which there are thirty-three, thirty-four. And that's because one of our main strengths is our relationship with the private sector. We have the current Chair of SPA here, Marty McCurvy, he was there right from the very beginning, and this was seed, the compact was seed-funded by the business sector, the Arts Council, the universities, and we must give, you know, a recognition to that. And the broad representation and stakeholder group have been influential enough to make things happen during this period as well. So as we go forward, part of the new cultural strategy is to look at our governance culturally because we want to make sure that every community cultural voice is heard as well as being able to place some of our beacons as well there. So what we've been doing over the last few years is also an initiative within the compact of supporting our national portfolio organisations. Those are organisations that have got funding, regular funding from the Arts Council, the smaller organisations. And that has helped initiate some of the private sector into some of the benefits of culture, recruitment, livability, supporting, I suppose there's also transferable skills, there's lots of data that relates to that. So one of our main focuses going forward for the future of the compact, which again has been supported by the Arts Council, is to continue and to develop our relationship with the private sector and to make sure that legacy continues in all sorts of forms. And that's just not your very large business organisations. There are the smaller business organisations, and we talked about small businesses, who could give positive supportive help to small cultural organisations so they can grow and build and develop a cultural ecosystem that will make sure that Sheffield can shout louder than it has. But we've come a long way in these last five years, and you as the council should be very proud of yourselves to be able to tool up, we've now got good cultural officers here that we can continue to do, and now we need to lobby SIMCA to make sure that they also develop and recognise that side as well. And that all relates back to developing our business sector because culture as we know is a main economic driver and that's why it's in the growth plan and that's why it's in our city goals, which it wasn't necessarily before, so we should celebrate that. I think Sheffield should celebrate itself and put, you know, give ourselves a big pat on the back because we are in a better place than we have been for many years. And I've been working as a PR and communications person in the city for thirty years, and we're in the best place we are to make those decisions. Funding is always an issue, we know that, but we've got a massive DIY culture and which we recognise, huge freelancers, great music heritage, visual arts heritage, performance heritage that we can build on. So I think, you know, there's a lot there and I think a lot more, we've gone somewhere, we've got a lot more way to go, but definitely the business, private sector is listening to us and ready to listen, and we have avenues into that. So we want to thank Sheffield Bid for contributing to the compact and also Sheffield Property Association for investing and seeing the potential to begin with, for placemaking etc. I know that was a bit of a rant, but I really felt you needed to hear all that. I apologise for that.
Thanks for a very complete and very reassuring answer, that's fantastic. And I'll just take chairs for all to for a second. We've even had a best practice visit from Leeds, who wanted to find out how well we were doing with the private sector as well.
They wanted to find out from us about...
I really enjoyed that meeting.
Yeah, I bet you did.
Okay, next up we've got Tony and then we're going to...
Thank you, thank you Chair. And thank you very much for all the work you're doing on this. It must have been tremendous effort to do all that you've been doing, it's looking amazing. This culture strategy speaks to a wide range of opportunities for our city and communities. It will empower people of all ages and abilities and is for everyone. There are so many strands to this and it is all encompassing. Music is my passion and anything that we can do to promote the teaching, learning and encouraging of children to engage and give them the chance to get involved is important. The Sheffield Music Hub or Harmony Works has a fantastic track record of delivering music education across the city. There have been great musicians emanating from Sheffield with the world famous bands that were born here, with Def Leppard, Richard Hawley, Jarvis Cocker and Phil Oakey, and many more, I'm sure there are. And music is part of our culture, tram lines and through the Studio Orchestra project, where young musicians were given a chance to perform this year and of course the mobiles. My education, sorry, music education is really powerful and I know firsthand because I had the opportunity from a very young age to learn how to study and be able to play. Cost is often a barrier to learning music, but the investment not only brings high-quality music education to more children and young people, but also provides hundreds of new musical instruments, ensuring that no child misses out because of this financial barrier. In full support of this culture strategy and thank you once again for all the great work you've done. Thank you Chair.
Thank you Tony. Not sure there was a question in there, but do you want to come back on that colleagues?
I'll just reiterate everything Tony said, and I think Sarah highlighted that music education's really featured quite highly in the children and young people, and we've got amazing kind of iconic projects like Harmony Works. We're doing lots of work with the team, with Ian Naylor and others, just to connect the culture strategy with their existing work but also think about its future. So as I've been in post, I've definitely picked up music as a really strong theme and it's something that I'm looking at in terms of how do we talk about Sheffield as a music city and what does that mean and who are all of the partners and stakeholders that need to be involved in that, so echoing really what Tony said.
Also, I would be remiss not to say that Jo showed me a middle page spread in The Telegraph today, which was about a brilliant project that they're up to, prepared to be amazed, a great headline, front page news, and that will be at the Crucible Theatre tomorrow at three PM and seven PM and Saturday as well, so please come along. Brilliant project with children and young people across Sheffield taking part in their first community opera.
Definitely a different tone to this meeting, Denise.
Thank you Chair, thank you for all your hard work to everybody in this room, I know that you've put many, many hours in to this. But just, and I know, and I thank you for this Katie, because you are agreeing to meet with, I'm just a little bit disappointed that the mention of football has not been in the strategy because football is a big deal in Sheffield, as you know, we've got four clubs and there's many, many families take part on a Sunday morning with their children playing football. And it's not just about the football, it's about the social, it's about the health aspect, it's about education, the training etc. And I just feel that we've missed a little part of this, and I know that you say that, you know, that you can do, there's more work to be done, but I would just like to highlight that and hope that we can bring that in somewhere, and thank you for agreeing to meet with us further on that. Also, I picked up on the communication side of things, we need to be better at this, don't we, in Sheffield, because, you know, when I'm out and about in my ward and in Sheffield, every time people say to us, why didn't we know about this? And this is a great event and, you know, we get to know about the big main ones like tram lines that are in the papers and in social media, but there's lots of little events as well that goes on, and the arts and the opera, and if somebody doesn't pick it up majorly, we need to know, we need to know how to get it across to our partners, our business people to advertise this because it's to their advantage. Because, you know, when things are happening in this city, our economy grows, and so that's just my point. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you Denise. I'll come to two points separately. So on the football, obviously a wider conversation that we're already having, like we do absolutely recognise particularly the passion around Sheffield as the home of football, and there's been a number of conversations and we are going to meet to talk about that subsequent to this committee meeting. It is in the strategy, so we do talk about Sheffield being the home of football, and we do recognise that culture means different things to different people and in their communities, sport is often how people connect with culture in their definition, so it absolutely is. I think for me, coming into the council and looking at all of the different strategic pieces of work we've done, football for me connects across culture and sport and leisure and heritage, and I think what we need to be better at is joining up the dots around that and just making sure that we do connect all of those strategic pieces of work and we don't, nothing falls through the gaps. So I think football really does, you know, connect people, it connects with culture, it's got that connection through to heritage but also sport and leisure and as you've mentioned, fitness. So really keen to pick up those conversations and maybe just for us in our comms around the strategy to really highlight that we have included it and we want to kind of highlight that as one of the strands of work. Take on board the communication, I think Sarah and the team are already thinking about, you know, what does that, not just digital but element of digital connectivity looks like, what does a digital hub look like, where you can find out as a resident and a community member or a visitor to the city kind of what's happening. We do have Welcome to Sheffield as a portal for that, we do have our favourite places as well as another tool that we can use. So we are thinking about how do we better connect and how do we make sure that our cultural offering is more accessible and better communicated. So any thoughts and comments on that really most welcome, like anything you think we should do, anything that would work in your particular area as well that might be different to another area of the city, we'd be really keen to kind of have that feedback as we move into delivery.
Just to come back on that, I mean old-fashioned posters and things like that because, you know, we all assume that everybody's on social media and they're not, and old-fashioned posters in libraries, where we can advertise them in parks, where people go publicly, you know, maybe going back to something like that, cheap and cheerful. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, thank you for that, we'll go this side next, Barbara.
Thank you Chair. I mean sort of, some of my questions have been addressed if you like. Excellent piece of work, I've been watching for how it's progressed and congratulations, nothing there, no. You're actually breaking down the silo approach, and my original question was, who was the same, you've answered that question, so I'm going down to the other end now. I mean sort of, I love street art and I know it's addressed, but I'm also very, very conscious of the youth or the people who engage in the tag art really spoil the appearance of the city. And I'm very conscious as a councillor, so I'm bringing it down to a level, there's a parallel universe out there that I'm aware of, but I just can't tap into, and you can't either. All the strategies, yes, you can work within the community, you can target certain groups, but there's still this undercurrent of people who feel disconnected to the wider society. And I'd love to think that there is some thought put into how we connect in there. I mean sort of, in my ward, we're trying to get something off the ground to engage people, but I don't know who to contact, who's got the contacts with this undercurrent, you know, this parallel class if you like, who I can work with, and I think that's the sort of thing that, it's not just that, it's in music as well, you know, that I'd love to sort of find out how to get engaged with. And so that's one point, the other point was about sort of Tony and music, and I'm very conscious that sort of over the decades, it's been the small pubs, in the city centre and elsewhere who've given place, space for these peoples to develop their skills, like the Arctic Monkeys, which pub is it, is it the Finnegans or something, that's now capitalising on its reputation, but with the changes in the city centre, with the focus on sophisticated nightlife, we're losing so many venues where we can develop these sort of, the interest in music on all sorts of levels. Yes, there's a brilliant what's happening in Sheffield, but again, I'm concerned about we're missing out on developing a whole series of talents across the city and we're not being able to engage with them, which is Denise's point, how do we engage, how do we communicate, these opportunities are there for them. So that's quite a lot there, thank you, but brilliant bit of work.
Am I able to pick that up? Is that all right?
I think, like officers to reply first and then Sarah if you want to add after that, if that's, I think that's how the process works. That's not a put-down, wouldn't there?
To co-opt Sarah into the culture team, yeah, just a few, I mean I absolutely echo what you're saying, I think it's a real challenge, and I've worked in education and the arts for majority of my career, so I think there is, there's a lot of opportunity there, we absolutely, you know, all the cultural organisations represent, we do great work with children and young people, then what used to be the hardest to reach, I'm not sure the terminology is quite right now, but those, particularly children and young people, but not exclusively adults as well, that don't engage and aren't necessarily connected into culture but would benefit, and also we would benefit from, so street art's a really good example, from the creativity as well, because culture is all about the creativity that we all make in our bedrooms and our streets and our communities as well. So I think just a few things to acknowledge that it's on our radar, so I'm talking to Music Venues Trust at the moment, particularly about grassroots music organisations and the struggles that they're facing in the city, so that is on our agenda and it's something that we're talking to them about. Tracks as a music charity does great work with children and people, and I've seen the young people performing, so I'm sure lots of you have over the years, you know, it's brilliant, and been able to highlight that. And then street art, we are, you know, we've done some really big pieces of street art in the city that have had high profile, but the work of all of the young people that are out doing that all the time, you know, the street art scene as it were is again part of our planning. So I suppose just to acknowledge that we see opportunities and challenges, we've got to think about how the strategic work that we're doing does connect, and I think we'd also recognise that a lot of the work to get the strategy to the point it's been today has been very focused on the sector, it's been very organisational level, there's a whole other piece of work that we'd love to do around audience and... very focused on the sector, it's been very organisational level. There's a whole other piece of work that we'd love to do around audience and community engagement and how we we then do connect better with what's happening in all of your areas of the city.
Yeah, and I was just going to come in to say that I think the important piece of work that we want to work on is the capital asset mapping across the city as well, to have a better database and understanding of what is going on in different communities and what resources are there or, you know, what buildings are facing challenges in terms of, you know, the physical structure of their building but also to see if there's places where there isn't enough activity happening as well. And then that can link in to hopefully further projects like Creative Communities funding and things like that that target specific areas. And yeah, and the Lick of, there's a new organisation called the
Lick of Paint.
Lick of Paint, Street Art Festival as well, which is just starting to form, which I think is quite an exciting opportunity for the city around street art as well.
Thank you. Colleagues, just before I bring Suri in, I'm conscious we're going slightly outside the standard process but I'm sure we're okay with that, are we? Yeah, yeah, fine, sorry.
Sorry, I just wanted to give a little bit of reassurance actually and obviously to build on what Katie and Sarah said really. This cultural strategy has given us the opportunity to really go wide and deep and obviously indications of where to go next. But we have got existing links also, like for example, when you talk about music with Harmony Works and that's for children and young people, for all backgrounds and all genres of music. So we've got their music in the round, we've got Brass Bands England's involved in that, Orchestras For All, that's right as well. So there's a whole range of different music genres that can pick up. And what Harmony Works will do, because it'll be like a national centre for music education, is to draw on all those different communities and to bring them in to work together. So that will be quite an exciting space in that way. But also I think there's existing links already that you could potentially use secure. And also as far as the street art's concerned, we've got a few high profile street artists like Kid Acne etc. But they will also be connected and a mentor to that underbelly of street art. So I think already probably through some of the contacts that we've done through the strategy, you'll be able to hopefully build on that as well. And the pub you're talking about is Fagin's in case you wanted to go, it's Fagin's, yeah.
No, thank you for that. And I think sort of my concern is still sort of people who normally feel completely disconnected. So you'll never reach them under the current thing because it's very formalised what you're saying. Even though the, you're very inclusive, it's still sort of a them and us approach. But also as a councillor, I have tried and tried for 18 months to get information about one thing. There is, I don't know who in the council I can actually say, look, I'd love to find a way of connecting with, it was street art in that case. Who do I turn to? Because someone's looks, all the officers keep on looking into it independently. But there must be a reservoir or repository where this information is available, where I can say, oh, you know, someone's, I'm aware of this issue, music. Who can I actually go to to sort of, you know, make the contacts?
There was an initiative, Feature Walls, wasn't there a few years ago, that the university did? And that was all about, do you know about that?
No, but that's certainly said a few years ago.
Yes, but the university must all have those contacts.
I'm a councillor and therefore my normal port of call would be a council officer somewhere.
Thank you Chair. Thank you for giving us an overview of the culture strategy. As stated in the report, this culture strategy will serve as a guiding vision for culture in our city for years to come. To mark this very important milestone, I would express my gratitude to all our officers and everyone involved, particularly Sheffield residents and organisations, for their efforts and input in the consultation process to help shape this culture strategy. Culture plays a very important and vital role in Sheffield. It enriches our lives and brings our communities together. It also creates jobs and economic opportunities. I look forward to seeing the positive impact the strategy will have on our city alongside other key strategies. So my question now is, we've got this fantastic culture strategy, what can Sheffielders expect in the next few months from the strategy? If you could please elaborate on that. Thank you.
So in the next few months really, so the start of next year is really when we want to start the programme of activation events and that is looking at themes or priorities that we've seen come out of the strategy of how we can kind of galvanise the sector. So that might be bringing together, you know, a conference on creative health for an example, or a collaborative event around schools meeting organisations that work with children and young people. Those are just a kind of couple, a few examples of what we can do in terms of those activation events. But really also, we want to keep talking to the sector as well about what they need and the challenges they're facing. We know that they change almost on a, yeah, weekly basis sometimes. So we want to kind of continue to use Have Your Say to get their feedback and engage them in that dialogue. But yeah, you should start, we should start to see more collaborative working as well that comes out of that as we look to how we can work with the sector and the collective leadership. Yeah, I think we'll be waiting, looking at the announcements that have been made about the budget and what funding we can draw down to further this work as well into the new year. And make those plans. That's my aim is for April us to be able to make some announcements about potential future grants or programmes and schemes that we could roll out as the council around this funding. But that delivery plan will be organised with the sector. So it's not just us kind of thanking them for the consultation and then drawing out a plan. We want to continue to work with them because they also will be the ones leading on lots of the delivery as well. They're doing it right now as well, so.
Just to add to that, from my point of view, like some stuff that you wouldn't necessarily see but it'll be happening in the background is continued conversations with the Arts Council, the Heritage Fund, with SIMCA. So looking at the strategic relationships we have and how we do get more national funding into the city, like this won't happen without additional investment from outside of Sheffield as well as inside Sheffield. And we know that funding is a challenge. So there is also all of that strategic conversations and the work going on to lobby and advocate. So for me, this is a document that I can use in those conversations and we can use outside of the city as much as we can to galvanise all of the activity that Sarah has referenced.
Great. And lastly Nikki.
Thank you Chair. Thank you everyone for your work on this. It's fantastic to see and great that people have come along today as well to be part of this stage of the process. And thank you for taking on some of the comments that have been provided from us. The vision looks really strong and it's good to see. I suppose there's two sides to what I want to say. One is around the promoting of it and the celebration of it. There was a phrase in there of Sheffield and its creative honesty, which I loved. I thought that really spoke to me in terms of Sheffield and the city's personality. And I just thought in terms of linking with the wider narrative and all of our strategies, the work that's coming down the line in terms of branding project as well, it really felt there was something there. Everything from say the brutalist architecture of Park Hill through to, yeah, some of the expressions of creativity we have, Sheffield's a city that doesn't pretend to be something it's not. It tells it as it is. It shares its stories and there's no pretension in it, I think sums us up pretty well. Which leads to celebrating, so the launch and the strategy and very much wanting to tap into the idea of people telling their stories. What's my Sheffield? What's your Sheffield story? And whatever medium that's through, whichever form of expression, making sure that is used then as a tool to get into some of those communities where some of those stories aren't being heard. On the other side of it, obviously the economic development side of this committee, we've talked about culture as an engine for growth. And obviously when we go to these communities and get them to tell their stories, it's great to be able to then say, well, did you know you could do this as a job, as a career for your life? And that seems a really challenging bit here, how we fit those bits together. And I know people in different sectors have said, one of the problems going back to what my colleague said is about that skills pipeline. And just how do you make that happen? Now, I know in the sort of film and TV sector, they've already sort of started themselves. They've got a meeting I think you're coming to next year, next month. And how much of it is still going to be that DIY culture? How much of it is going to be working with the sort of private sector? You've got companies like Warp Films, I'm sure other film companies are available, who want to stay here, who want to get young people into the film and TV industry. How do we do that? That seems really difficult. Now, yesterday again in the budget, there was the mention, I think of Sunderland and their TV and film studios. I know Birmingham are trying to do the same, Liverpool. But as you said just now, the industry changes so quickly. So we have the writers' strike in America. Somebody said the other day, America sneezes and everyone loses their jobs over here. So how can we do that in a way that is sustainable, attract our young people into those industries? And then I suppose my final question is something I say every time we talk about strategy in here, and you have touched on it a bit, I think there's a bit of recognition that we need to do things differently, about getting schools involved and the local academy trusts and recognising that the current ways we engage aren't enough and they're so stretched that for them to reach outside what they do day to day is really challenging. But I know there are lots of, you know, art and design teachers, music teachers, drama, film teachers who would love their students to be much more involved in what's going on in the city and make those links with industry as well. But finding a way to do that that's more than just lip service is really challenging. So I really hope, I was glad to see the focus on children and young people and I know you'll be looking at that. Thank you.
There you go.
There's quite a few things there, so that's fine. Can I try and pick up most of them if not all? So definitely agree around the promotion and celebration. So the plans really is that we will do a a soft launch, a thank you, something in the autumn that's an opportunity for us all to come together and just celebrate the achievement of the strategy. And as Sarah said, planning for something bigger, for want of a better word, in the spring when we can weave some of those narratives together really and do something that does connect some of these dots. So watch this space for that. It's really lovely to hear somebody kind of reflect back on the strategy that you've not been like in the weeds because I think for us, so the expression creative honesty I equally really love and I think there's lots of opportunity. So as you were talking, I suppose, just recognising that my remit covers visitor economy, marketing Sheffield, the work that Emma's going to talk about following this presentation as well and the city brand work as well. And I do think we really need to interlink and connect all those dots. So my job absolutely is putting that jigsaw piece puzzle together with the different pieces. The idea of people telling their stories and how we can kind of weave that in, we've talked about award ceremonies, we've talked about competitions, we've talked about loads of really great creative ideas. And I suppose as we close this segment, just to say that please do reach out to us, like do come and, you know, have a conversation or like something you think we need to consider. Two things then, schools, my background, it is challenging, you know, it is demanding for teachers and those working with children and people in schools. We need to make that easier for them to engage with culture in a meaningful way. So Create Sheffield is one way we can do that, Learn Sheffield is another way we can do that. Music Education Hub's got really good links as well. So we are looking at that. And I don't know if you want to pick up Sarah on kind of the talent and skill side of things, that's your background and and other themes for us.
Yeah, so I think this is really what we're looking at as well as the new culture team around how do we help with skills and talent? And I think you gave some examples there that are pertinent to the film industry, but we're seeing that across, you know, that could be the same case in all different art form areas as well. So it's also I think about looking at what are those organisations that are helping with those kind of links to children and young people and growing talent? And how do we create the pipeline through Sheffield for them to go to then, you know, train at our brilliant universities and go on for careers in the arts and things? And there are many brilliant organisations doing that work. Recently we met with Film Hub North, you know, they're doing a lot of that work in the film area. We've got Rivlin Co here doing a lot of training in Hillsborough as well around performing arts and involving communities. So I think it's about supporting those organisations that are already doing this work and recognising what they're contributing rather than, we don't want to necessarily just roll out programmes ourselves. We can see that there's partners who are doing that work and we need to bolster them basically.
So thank you colleagues. I'm going to draw that, a line under that if that's okay. Just final chair's remark. Culture's really important. It's for everybody. It makes Sheffield a nice place to live. And it helps us, it helps the economy by helping us attract top talent to the city. And we're blessed with a very active and vibrant cultural sector. So having said that colleagues, we have a recommendation before us to approve the cultural strategy for adoption and publication. Are we agreed? Does anybody disagree? In that case, it's unanimous. Thank you very much. Visitors are welcome to stay but can I just double check? Do you guys know your way out? Right, follow that. I'm sure, this is a brilliant agenda. So item nine, we have strategic major events plan. And I believe Emma you're presenting, but if you could introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Hi everybody. I'm at France. I'm the Service Manager for Marketing Sheffield and I'm one of the leads on the major event work for the council. I feel like my posse has left me. Because I had some really great event organisers there and some of the people who were on the steering board for Mobo Awards actually. So yeah, but they've all gone. So I'll rely on Katie and Ben as my posse. It would be remiss of me not to acknowledge today the involvement of the major events team. And I know that many of you know Gary Clifton who leads on the major events for the council, who is by the sea I think today, probably having some wellbeing time. But it's very much been a joint effort this between Marketing Sheffield and the major events team and the two directors Diana Buckley and Luciferth. As you know, major events kind of touches many, many, many areas of the council. And it's a beautiful dovetail with the culture strategy as well because it's a massive part of that strategy as well. So I do want to acknowledge the work that they've put into this as well. So this report is setting out our approach as the council to major events. And this came from a request back in November 2023 where Martin asked us to bring an update on where we were with major events to committee. And that approved us as a team being able to scope out what a major events plan and more strategic long term major events plan would look like for the city. And this is stage one of that plan. So as Martin mentioned, please note that the appendix information is confidential. Some of that is because it's sensitive financial information but you will hopefully have seen the ambition of some of the events that we are kind of starting to consider and some of those may become under non-disclosure agreements and things like that. So that's one of the reasons for that. But hopefully it gives you some idea of the ambition of the strategy. So we all know that events are integral to Sheffield's economic success. I don't think anyone would dispute that. The city hosts some fantastic events, some of the largest events in the UK. We've had the Tour de France, we've had the Women's Euros, we've had the Rugby League World Cup. We've recently been involved in some of the most high profile bidding processes in the UK such as Eurovision. And we've hosted national and internationally significant events such as the recent Tour of Britain, the International Parrotail Tennis Championships, which you may be aware of, and the International Celiac Disease Symposium which brought 600 of the world's leading celiac specialists into the UK for a week from around about 32 different countries. Some of these we don't see. Obviously because they take place behind closed doors but they are happening in Sheffield. And obviously we delivered an exceptional event at very short notice around the Mobo Awards, of which you probably know a lot more about that on the Mobo fringe. So the expertise and experience within the council's events teams and the Marketing Sheffield team that's been developed over the past two decades has resulted in a diverse and high impact council of has resulted in a diverse and high-impact council events programme. We've got a strong track record of hosting events. And in the report, you will see a couple of testimonials, one from UK Sport and one from Kanye King from Mogo Awards about, um, the reputation of Sheffield. Um, we have a great network of, of festival organizers, event producers, venue operators, um, in the city. Um, who bring expertise and ideas into the city's events programme, festivals like Off the Shelf, Doc Fest, No Bounds, obviously Liam was here, um, earlier. Tram Lines, Festival of Minds, um, would not exist without the energy of the sector, um, across events. And the impact of events is significant, um, for the city. Events and festivals continue to help us build our reputation. And they allow others to see and experience Sheffield on a different scale and in different ways. So in developing, um, this plan, we have identified strengths and opportunities across, um, a wide range of event sectors. Often people say to me, it's all about sport in Sheffield. Well, I think we've seen this morning that it's not. Um, it's as much about culture and it's as much about business conferencing as well. Conferences are massively important and often you don't see them because they're behind closed doors. But the research and development of the universities are really, really important. So you'll see that our plan for the strategy is a balanced approach across sport and business and, um, conferencing and culture, sorry, sort of business and culture. Um, we, why are we doing this now? Um, well internally, we have issues and challenges to address and resolve. Although outwardly our reputation is good, there's more that we can be doing to strengthen our strategic approach and our decision-making processes through the production of a major events plan. And the idea is that we would deliver a longer-term plans and resource approach with a clear pipeline of events. So what we're going for, why we're going for, when we're going for it, you know, what the implication is in terms of financials and capacity. Um, and we'd have a prioritized action plan for transforming our approach to events. Um, there were some statistics that were announced yesterday from a body called UK Events. UK Events are kind of the leading body for all events in the UK. And I would have put them into the report had I had them, but they were, they were here yesterday. So the new figures, um, events are worth 61.65 billion pounds to the UK. Business events are 33.6 billion of that. And leisure and outdoor events, which includes music and festivals and things like that, are 28.05 billion. It is a huge, huge market, you know, I mean, it's a, it's a huge business. Um, they are big business in the UK and they are big business in Sheffield. And without an enhanced strategic approach to targeting and bidding for events in Sheffield, we could take a backward step at a time when the sector is getting increasingly competitive. But we're also at a transformational point in Sheffield around a lot of the other things that we're doing. It's increasing competition amongst destinations. You will see that yourself. Um, Accommodation Business Improvement District, known as ABID, some business-led initiatives, um, that are being implemented and considered by other destinations are making some cities, you know, much more effective in, in that competitive environment. In Sheffield, we have a strong and long-term relationship with organizations like UK Sport, with Visit Britain, with ICA, which is the International Congress and Convention Association. And we really must get ourselves into a position to capitalize on those quickly. And we know that SIMCA have a renewed interest in supporting events. They supported us on the Mogo Awards. Um, they have sponsored Crosswires and they were very engaged in the Tour of Britain recently. Um, and these events also support the work that we're doing across South Yorkshire to grow the visitor economy. So in developing a major events plan, we want to achieve a transformation in Sheffield's major events programme with a step change in strategic planning. We want to explore mutually beneficial public and private sector partnerships, which will deliver, deliver event opportunities and shared investments. We want to look at effective and efficient governance, which will ensure kind of transparent and decision-making processes and clearly defined strategic, financial, economic and other criteria, so that the council can make accountable and evidence-based decisions and maximizing value for money, return on investment, um, and private sector funding. We want to look at feasibility of a council single funding pot available for investment into major events. Cause at the moment, as you'll see from the confidential appendix, um, money into events comes from different pots. It's kind of a bit all over the place, even though we kind of know where it all is. Um, so there's definitely something to be, to be done in terms of kind of trying to bring this together. And enabling the public sector funding is seed cord funding to, to leverage additional, um, public sector and private sector contributions. So it's like pump priming, um, some of the opportunities. That we'll be learning from emerging new private sector led destination development funding mechanisms that are in other cities. So we're very close to other cities. So we know what they're doing in Manchester. We know what they're doing in Leeds. We know what they're planning in Scotland. So we're looking at all of those things and seeing which is most effective and what potentially could happen in Sheffield. And we want clear decision-making and clarification of what we support and why. It's very easy to make any case for any event, um, but we have to be very, very clear on what we're supporting and why we're doing, doing that. Um, and this will include major events which create tangible additional benefits for Sheffield's economy, profile nationally, and events that generate community and social benefits at neighbourhood and local levels. So to help with that decision-making process, you'll see in the report that we've suggested, um, a categorization of four types of events. Um, over the years, we've had many, many different categorizations. So hopefully this is nice and clear. Um, that's a rotating national or an international profile event. So that could be the Mogo Awards or something like the European Figure Skating Championships, which Sheffield will be hosting in January 2026. These are events that go all over the place. And then we obviously encourage them to come to Sheffield for a particular, um, like as a one-off or maybe they might come every three years or something like that. Sheffield-based national or international profile events. So this is something that, um, is, it's home is Sheffield. So Doc Fest is a classic example of that. Um, but it still has national and international reach. Um, it can still tell Sheffield's story, um, nationally and internationally. We'll have new or incubator events. So these are the events that at the moment might not have kind of a national or international profile. They might not be bringing people in from outside of the city, but they have the potential to do so with the right incubation, um, and the right support. So we talked about the Look of Paint Festival. That's a classic example of that. So something like the Lunar Festival or those, um, events with massive, massive potential. And then we have the local seasonal neighbourhood events, which often sometimes referred to as community events or, um, you know, kind of Sheffield's, um, kind of neighbourhood programme or something like that. So those are things that happen in communities. So the western part may fail or some of the events that, that some of you have picked up on today. And also we're suggesting some improved decision-making principles, which we want to test with partners. So that's one of the, the, the asks that we have today. So, um, we have five key principles around how we would make a decision on, um, what we support and what we don't support. Economic impact, branding reputation, community benefits, inclusion and diversity, and the supporting of key strategies, of which the culture strategy is one, but also the destination management plan, um, city goals and the leisure and, um, event strategy as well. So those are kind of the two foundational principles, the pillars that we're trying to, to put together. And this will form stage one. Um, and the next phase really is meaningful consultation with partner and experts in the field. Um, to, to test that these principles and foundations, um, are the right things. So this is what we're asking for committee approval on, that you're happy with this and that we can go out and start to test that with the sector. We outline the current fund model in the appendix. Um, as, as you can kind of see, it comes from a range of budget areas and also from one-off funding opportunities. Um, and there's a breakdown of spending there since, um, since Covid. Um, we kind of need to, for want of another expression, tidy that up. And I think we need to kind of get a lot more strategic, um, around that. So we've looked at some alternative options. We could maintain the status quo. We could continue to look at events as one-offs, as we have been doing now when an opportunity comes to us. But often this leads to late decision-making. It leads to funding requests at short notice. It doesn't always allow for social impact programmes to be developed. Um, or to, or for strategic partnerships to, um, to be developed. And, and really without a longer-term strategy, this, there is, there is a very, very high risk that Sheffield starts being left behind as other cities advance in this competitive marketplace. And as we know, this is massively important to Sheffield. We really, really cannot, um, cannot find ourselves in that situation. It would be a travesty. So. Or we could choose ultimately not to invest in events. You know, there are events that you can bid for that, that don't really cost any money. Um, but it would be unlikely that a funding gap will be met by other stakeholders without the council taking the lead on pump prime, um, funding. Um, the number and caliber of events hosted in the city would reduce. Um, we would lose Sheffield's place as a competitive key host city. And we'd likely not achieve the same level of growth from events as outlined in our key strategies. Um, so we really do feel that now is the time, um, to take that longer-term and more proactive and really ambitious approach. Not to say that we aren't ambitious in the city already on events, because I know that we are. Um, but we can actually together and collectively and more strategically become even more so. Um, future funding will require moving to a longer-term funding model. And, um, that's also what we're asking, um, for, um, committee approval on today, that we can actually start to deep dive into what that might look like. Um, we, we have a view of all of the different types of funding models that are used in other cities, both nationally and internationally. Um, but actually we need to do some really deep dive work to work out, um, you know, how that might work for Sheffield and what is the best, the best option. So we are kind of asking for, um, approval on, on that as well. Um, those mechanisms could include, I've had a, a, a list of those in, so maximizing commercialization of events, so the income that events already make. Recognizing how public sector can contribute more sustainable seed funding, this pump priming idea. Grant opportunities for events, opportunities of sponsorship or even philanthropic donations, which we have seen. Learning from existing funding mechanisms for use in other cities, which, you know, it's, um, it's, it's, it's quite competitive out there. So there's a lot of stuff for us to, to look at and, and review. And looking at funding opportunities potentially from things like the new operator contracts for our leisure and entertainment venues. All of those things we just want to explore and see what the feasibility is. So this will be an area of focus for this piece of work if the principles in phase one are approved. And the team are able to move forward with phase two of the development of a major events plan with appropriate financial planning and business models included. So I think that's really it. So I don't know whether you want to read the, uh, the, the, the decision, um, criteria or, um, or I can summarize, Martin.
I think we'll give people the opportunity for, for questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I'm going to take chairs probably given us one first before I was diving that. I was really interested in that. I mean, we know that Sheffield is really good at major events and the team fantastic. And we probably punch above our weight. But I was really interested when you said that, uh, business conferencing was half of the market. Could you give us a bit more on what does the, the, the city need to do to capture a bigger slice of that market?
Um, well, it's my, yeah, absolutely. Do you want me to do that first or? Yeah. Um, so.
Just checking to see what's to come next.
My 20-year kind of career here at Sheffield City Council has been in conferences. I literally could talk to you about them all day. So I'll try and keep it, um, keep it brief. Conferences are huge, um, to, to Sheffield. They happen behind closed doors. So you don't often see, um, the fact that they're here. But you will note if you talk to any hotelier, if you talk to any venue, that actually conferences are the big money for them. The people who come to a conference spend more money, delegates spend more money, they spend more money in hotel, they probably drink more coffee. Maybe because they don't have to actually pay for it. But, um, but it is a huge, um, a huge marketplace for Sheffield. Sheffield, actually, we are very, very competitive. We are currently, um, one of the top, um, 12 UK, sorry, English cities in the ICA rankings, which is the international, um, convention cities ranking. So we do really, really well. And a lot of that is because of, um, our universities. So the research and development that the universities do essentially stands us in really good stead for, um, all of these kind of research conferences that come in. So the reason that the Celiac Conference came to Sheffield is we run something called the, um, the Conference Ambassador Programme, which has been running in my team for about 15 years. So we work with leading academics, uh, both at the universities and in the hospitals. Um, in this case, Professor David Sanders, he's a gastroenterologist at the Hammershire. Um, and the gastro team at Hammershire are world-leading. Um, so if anybody needs a colonoscopy, I hope you never do, but have it in Sheffield. Cause it's, uh, it's the place, uh, it's the place to have it. So he has the, he has the desire um, to showcase what his team are doing in his city. Um, so we work with him, he opens the door, we do the legwork, we write the bid for him, um, we get some funding for him to go out to Paris and, um, via Visit Britain to, to basically pitch for these events. And then he brings 600 of the leader, the world's leading gastro, um, team to Sheffield for a week. And so they were in City Hall, they were in Cutlass Hall, they used Cambridge Street Collective, they stayed at all the hotels. These are huge, um, events. But they, they just don't, you know, they're, they're not there for the world to see, I suppose, kind of, you know, unless you kind of walk past City Hall and you saw the banner on the front of it welcoming them, you wouldn't really know, know that they're here. But they, um, it is a massive play, piece of the jigsaw puzzle. And if you look at other cities, um, it's even more so, you know, they, they are, that, that, that balance between sport and culture, I mean, sport, you know that sport's here. You know that the Mogos are here. Um, you don't know that the, the conferences are here, but the conference market actually as a sector is really, really strong in Sheffield. It could be a lot stronger, um, if we were using some, um, I suppose we were kind of marketing more aggressively, um, Sheffield as a host city for those events. We do some of that in the UK, but we could actually be taking that internationally and we are starting to look at that, working with Meet England, which is part of, uh, which is part of Visit Britain. Um, and these events, and I'll stop after this, are so important because if you're going to a conference around your specialism, you will go to Sheffield if you're told to go to Sheffield. You're not choosing to come to Sheffield. If you're a leading gastro judge and you're wanting to be at that conference, you're going to come to Sheffield anyway. It's a much, much more efficient way of getting these leading world specialists into our city than inviting them all individually. Um, and it is the best way of showcasing Sheffield's expertise on the world stage. We can literally tell the world where Sheffield leads the way. Yes, in just, in kind of, I suppose in kind of niche areas and everything, but that is, you know, when the National Centre for Child Health Technology opens at the Olympic Legacy Park in 2026, we've already worked with the leading academic there, Paul Demetri, who's part of the Children's Hospital. And we're already in the fourth year of running a child technology conference, a child health technology conference. So that when they open, we can do a bigger version of that onsite at the, at the, um, at the centre. So huge potential. Um, yeah, yeah, huge potential, massive, massive for businesses. Because obviously if you look at all its developments in the heart of the city, it's brilliant that kind of our local kind of business community and residents are using those things. But without people coming in and staying in our hotels and then using those, then, you know, I mean, they're not, they need that to continue that success. And, and we talk about how many cups of coffee they may buy. Um, and it's, uh, you know, it's, it's a serious start.
Thank you. I'm loving the enthusiasm today.
Sorry.
So I'm going to start from this side first on this one. So we go, uh, Barbara, Denise, Simon, Nikki.
Thank you, Martin. But you actually sort of asked the question I was going to ask. Because, I mean, the one thing that you didn't identify as sort of funding at the moment was conferencing. And, and I thought, again, following on from that, um, visit to the Olympic Legacy Park, I thought the, we need to promote much more of this and you're doing that. And I hadn't realized how much active work you've done on, on the thing. You know, so basically, I suppose, what I'm asking is sort of, because so much of the focus is on events as people recognize them, do you have the resources to, or how do you go out to places like this, which would, which would sort of bring conferences in Sheffield? I mean, the university is an obvious link. Uh, Olympic Legacy Park is an obvious link. And I hadn't realized how much you've been doing on it, which shows the level of ignorance in, if you like. Um, but how, you'll have opportunities like that in Sheffield. And have you got that standard method? Because you've got to go out, because it was obviously Olympic, try again. Olympic Legacy Park personnel were quite stretched in what they could do and they relied on other partners. There must be so many institutions in Sheffield with similar things, which have not got that international profile, like say the gastroenterology.
Gastroenterology, yeah.
You know, and, and, but you didn't identify that sort of, you needed resources to promote this. So I suppose that's the one thing that you didn't say. You say you want to do it. How can you do it? And how proactive can you be?
Um, so it, if you cast your mind back to the Destination Management Plan, objective one is to promote Sheffield as a host city for conferences. Um, so obviously we could always do more. Um, it would be wrong for me to say that we couldn't. But we do have a conference, um, what we call Convention Bureau bidding team within the Marketing Sheffield team, which every city has. Um, so there are kind of two and a half full-time equivalents in that team who go out there and identify, um, those events. So they work with Visit Britain, they work with ICA, they do their own desk research to identify those events and they also run the ambassador programme. We go to, um, lots of expos. So we go to something called the Meeting Show, which is in London every year in June. Um, we take private sector partners with us. So, you know, some of the hotels, some of the big venues, Cutlass Hall come with us. Um, so there is very much a team Sheffield approach in doing that. We could absolutely do more. Um, and, you know, the more you do, the more, it's a cycle, the more you do, the more you can, you can bid for. But from, you know, they are a very high-functioning team and they've been around for quite a long time and they're very, um, integrated into the kind of, um, the ambassador network, as we call it, with the university and the consultants at the hospitals. So, um, you can always do more, but there is a team, um, that, that actually are, that take that on, that I manage. So yeah, we can, we can certainly give you more information on that and the things that we do.
No, basically sort of it's you tend to keep your eye on things rather than get sort of companies or organizations to approach you. That sounds like it. What's, is it just, you're open to everything? People know that you do this. Uh, but I want to finish off by saying, I just think it's a fantastic group of officers that we've got here and for the whole strategy. So I'll get that in before I forget to say, well done all of you for what you've been doing.
Yeah, we'll take anything. Um, but proactively we go after kind of the association research-based conferences. And the main, the main reason for that is they need a city approach. So, um, you, what we add as a team is that kind of city umbrella. So you, what we add as a team is that kind of city umbrella and wraparound. So we can actually give them all of the things that they need from the city.
Thank you. Denise?
Thank you, Chair. I welcome this plan. I, I, having worked with the major revenge team and I put on the Queen's coronation with them and worked very, very closely and saw how underfunded that you are. They work beyond, above and beyond and, you know, and what they ever get paid for. So I want to put that on record and thank them for this. So it's, it's very welcome. I witnessed the behind the scenes, what they actually do. They're early in the morning, they're putting barriers out, they're making sure the public are safe. And these are the things that I don't think as councillors or as a public appreciate, how, how big, you know, a job that you've got on a small team and a small budget. And so I welcomed this and hope. And my, getting to my question, I suppose, is, is the funding, you've touched on it. And I'm, you know, we really need more funding into that team because you don't want to lose this, these people, do you? And you've got a good team, you want to keep on doing that and cherish it and worship it and not, and not lose that commitment. So, yeah, funding.
And, and so the idea is in phase two, you know, we recognise that there is an opportunity with a much more strategic and long-term plan to attract additional funding streams. And that's what we want to do. But when you have kind of a one-off reactive approach, you're always going to get events that come at you from left field. I don't think anybody, when the Eurovision came to us, would have predicted that five years before. You're always going to get stuff like that. But if you have a much more strategic and long-term approach, which is consulted with those people in the sector, so that the events that we're looking at also, you know, are supporting businesses and the people in the city that, where events are important to them, then you have, you know, you have, you stand a better chance of kind of looking at those things. And that's, that's the piece of work that we want to do next. But I think you, you're absolutely right. There is, we are very, very fortunate in Sheffield to have a lot of expertise and the team Sheffield approach is second to none. And so, you know, and I think that is recognised by some of the things I've put in there from some of the event organisers, but also from colleagues at Visit Britain and UK Sport. You know, Sheffield is, is very much seen as that kind of can-do, you know, approach. And, and events are very varied. There are events where you need barriers, there are events where you don't necessarily need to do, do so much. But I think you've got, you know, there is a strong commitment and, and, and all, everybody that works in events in the city wants Sheffield to succeed in events. So, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a fabulous sector to work in.
Thank you. Simon, you're up next.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, reading, reading the report and, and to some degree, the, the report, the previous report we had. It put me in mind of, kind of, cracking, I'm going to go 15, 16 years ago, I was on, I was cabinet member for finance. And the original organisers of tram lines came to, I think it would have been Martin's equivalent on the, on the cabinet, and said, we've got this great idea for a festival. Can, can we have some money? And so we discussed it around the cabinet table and thought it was a great idea. And it was something like £35,000, I think, to, to, to put it on. And we thought, you know, great investment. It turns out to be a brilliant investment for the city. And they came back, I think, the next year. And we said, well, you've got a great event, you don't need any more money. And they're like, yeah, okay. And, and they, they kind of ran with it. My, I suppose my question is, is how are we making sure that, you know, we're, 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 we're there for the, the next tram lines? How are, how are these people going to know that we're here to support them? And as I say, the, the decision-making process was, as I say, pretty much, these guys turned up and, and gave us the ask and we went, all right, yeah, sounds all right. We'll give you some cash. What's the, you know, how streamlined is, is that decision-making? And how are we going to, going to be encouraging local people to come up with these ideas and, 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 and start the next, the next tram line? And obviously not just in the music sphere, in, in, you know, in the arts, in, in anything really, skateboarding, whatever, I don't know. And that's, that's, I suppose, that's the kind of thing about it is, is we don't know what the next thing is going to be. How are we making sure that we're tapping into that? Thank you.
I think the tram line story is, is a really powerful story in terms of why a long-term approach is, is needed. And I think what we're, what we're trying to do is, if you move to a longer term plan, where you kind of, you know what events you're going for, then you are kind of already on the way to making those decisions. I think that there's a separate piece of work to do around new and incubator type events and how, within the other strategies. So for example, if you're trying to encourage cultural freelancers, for example, to look at bringing events to the, to the table, I think we need to look at that more widely within some of, some of the other strategies. I mean, you know, there isn't an endless part of money ultimately, you know, and, but you're absolutely right that we only know what we're told about and then we can only react to that. So having a more strategic and proactive approach where we've already kind of not completely mapped out the next 10 years, but had a really good idea of, of mapping out what that might look like would put us in a, in a better position. I don't really want to come in on that.
Yeah, I should start to think in terms of the, the other elements. So the major events, I think, if you think about the two top tiers, and they're not top in terms of priority, but top in terms of purpose in your report, are the things that we're wanting to create that pipeline for and we're wanting to look ahead for the next 10 years. I think when you look at the incubator and you look at the neighbourhood level and you look at culture, as you would imagine as officers, we're getting approached daily, weekly, with people who have great ideas, who want support, either as match funding for a bigger bid, or they want council support for something that they want to do in Sheffield, which is brilliant. And we want to be able to foster that. And we absolutely see a role for ourselves in both areas of my work, definitely. And I think what we need to do in the short term, which feeds into the work that Emma and the team are going to do on the major events as well, is have a process that wraps around that. So we can be much more open and transparent about where those decisions are made and how they're made. Obviously, committee system helps with that and you're all part of that process. But for us as officers as well and for the, the team at the council, to have kind of a set of, not making it own, or so not making it a bidding process as such, but having something that we can kind of use as a mechanism so people can come, we can get out there and say, we want to hear from you if you've got an idea for an event. We want to hear from you if you need support with a, a festival or, or whatever kind of work that you want to do. So we do have that already with some of our things that, say, are referenced, our cultural pipeline fund, you know, we do have open application processes. We don't necessarily have it for everything and there are still those conversations happening where people have got a great idea, they're coming along, they're, they're making a specific ask. And we want to be able to, to really think about how do we embrace that? How do we support that? Also, how do we diversify that so that more and different people can come to us and have those conversations? And it's not always the same conversations with the same organisations. There are great examples of support for tram lines or Doc Fest or Crosswires, like loads of really amazing stuff coming out of the city. We want to keep that going. So we recognise that there's a, there's a process piece probably for me to look at that sits alongside this major events work as well.
I think just coming back to conferences, so we are asking academics and, and, and kind of consultants at the hospitals for ideas for either creating their own conference or actually bringing something in. And there are a few funds within Visit Britain, particularly for international events, where we, we kind of hold their hands and bid for the money. So if they want to try and bring an international event into the UK and Sheffield, there is a fund available there as well. It's a DCMS fund that we effectively help them. We, we do that for them really and then they can, they can bring that money. So in different sectors, it works in, in different ways. But it's definitely a massive part of the jigsaw, yeah.
Thank you. Just mindful of time. So we're going to go Nikki, Ibi, and then finally Henry. I'm mindful that we have one other item on the agenda. So Nikki.
Thanks. Quick questions. When we went to the Olympic Legacy Park, the new venue there, which I can't remember what it's called, it's named after the, is it Cannon or something?
Cannon Medical Arena.
Yeah, that was it, yeah. We were talking to somebody there and I want, he was talking about what you were just saying, those big events that you bid for, but how great it is if you can incubate your own and grow them because you've got the control over that. I suppose I'm interested in what it is you're looking for to get from that new incubator event that you know has got potential to get up to the second level, to make it a Doc Fest or something like that. But I also wanted to know, when the event companies, with these big national, international events come to Sheffield, what feedback do we get about what we could improve? You know, do we need more hotels? Do we need bigger venues? On that, I saw a political conference down there. You've got lots of people here who've gone to a lot of political conferences. I could talk to you about that. Trade union conferences as well. They spend a ridiculous amount of money on events. And then do you have the tools to make that judgement about assessing the economic impact? Because I can imagine that's pretty tricky to do. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try and do this quite quickly. So your first answer in terms of what we're looking for, I think that is a piece of work that needs doing. I think I could give you my view, but I do think that that's probably something that we, that we, that we do need to look at, particularly around those incubator events. Because as Katie said, a lot of the work on this plan is not focusing on those events. And it's kind of focusing on some of the slightly bigger ones. So I think that's something that we, that we will look at. In terms of, you know, Sheffield has a very good venue portfolio. It has some really, really great hotels. There are some limitations. I think in, in terms of feedback, I think that potentially we, we lack a little bit in exhibition space to make an event commercial and kind of floor space. But the most important thing on that is about making sure that you're pitching for the events that fit with the Sheffields. You know, the Sheffield kind of make-up the venue portfolio because all cities have a different jigsaw. You know, everyone has a different plan and it all fits together very differently. So what we do as a team is we make sure that what we're pitching for fits straight away. Do you know what I mean? Some cities will go for certain things, some cities will go for others. So the feedback that we do get, consistent feedback that we get on events is how amazing the team Sheffield approaches. And the fact that they literally get hand-held throughout the whole process on all events. But also about how unique some of our venues are. And what we're finding post-COVID is people want to be in the city and they can feel like they are in their city, not a, not a box. So yes, we don't have an ICC, you know, and, and some people want, you know, an exhibition centre or they want an NEC. But that's about kind of tailoring your bidding process. So when, so, yeah, I mean, but overwhelming. I don't think I've ever brought an event organisers to Sheffield and they haven't given me really positive feedback. There might have been a reason why we didn't get the event in the end, but I've never had someone come and say, actually, no, this is, this isn't, this isn't great for, for us. Economic impact, we do have a series of tools that we can use. We'd like to enhance those. But, yeah, we can kind of compare apples with apples. We know, we know how, we've got kind of a bit of what Gary Clifton would call the sausage machine. And we, we can do that. We're also working with Visit Britain and UK Sport on their impact assessment tools as well. They are, Visit Britain in particular, looking at a social impact assessment tool and measuring the social impact of an event. As we found with MOBOs is quite hard, but also very, very important. So, so, so yes, I feel quite reassured that we do have the tools and we will have more tools in the future.
So just to say, I get what you say about bidding for what fits our city. But I think that feedback about how we could grow and change is really, really important, especially feeding into the growth plan. So make sure you share your observations.
Yeah, thanks, Nikki. Thanks for that. Ibi?
Thank you, Chair. I fully support us having a strategic major events plan to make our decision, to help our decision-making process, to make our city even more competitive in bidding for and hosting major events. You, we've talked about conferences quite a lot. Conferences involve bringing people to Sheffield and they contribute to our economy. But more and more events and conferences have been held online. How are we going to compete with that or complement that? Do you have any ideas on that?
There are still some events that are being held online, although if you look at the major research, a lot of them have gone back to face-to-face and a lot of that is because you cannot network online. So I don't really see that as, as being a major issue. All of the conferences that are in our pipeline to bid for are all face-to-face. They might have a hybrid element, but they are all face-to-face. So I think that's starting to, to come back. Just, just in the nature of the fact that you can't, you really know yourself. If you go to one, you can't really network online. And that's, that's the most important part of, of those connections. So I could probably go away and find a little bit more statistical information on that, but, yeah, that's not been an issue for us. We haven't, we haven't found an event that we want to bid for that has been online, if that makes sense.
Sure, just a, a local hotelier has fed back to me saying that he's noticed less conferences being held and his hotels being booked, less booked with conferences. So he's thinking of pivoting to something else. But, yeah, I suppose it's not unique to Sheffield. I think it's, it's, you know, nationwide. But, but taking the digital space into consideration is a sort of a factor in my view.
If you look at the recent piece of research that we do that measures the sector for 2023, we were back up to almost pre-COVID levels. So whilst that might be an observation in one particular establishment across the city, we've booked the national trend. So we're doing better, or we were in 2023, than some of the other core cities. So actually it is performing very well. We know that part of that is because of a bit of a date lag and there was a bit of a squash into 2023 from some things that hadn't happened because of COVID. So we're watching very closely what happens in 2024, in this year. But spend was also up. So the amount of money that people were spending on, on being at a conference and also staying over on a conference was up as well compared to the national average. So whilst there is still a lot to do and there's a lot more we can go at, the initial stats for 2023 are quite positive.
Just a quick point, Chair. I think we should sell for that Sheffield, Sheffield geographic location is very unique and is, is very central. I think if you use, add that to USP, I think you might be more successful in any more events to come to Sheffield.
We absolutely do. I mean, yeah, that kind of connected. It's a bit of a double leg sword because people can also get home quite quickly from Sheffield and might not stay over. So, but, yeah, the, you know, the, the kind of, and we work really closely with all the other cities in the UK and the northern cities around that because, you know, particularly internationally, when people are coming in. But, yeah, it's a central location. It's a, it's a massive feature of why people choose Sheffield.
And finally, Henry.
Yeah, thanks for all of the work that's gone into this. It's great to see a plan coming together. It sounds like a really pivotal time in terms of being able to build on our recent successes and also keep this competitive edge in what sounds like quite a crowded marketplace. But you mentioned some of the sort of threats to the, to the city strategy. There's the funding threat. So I'm very much looking forward to seeing what comes out in phase two in terms of how we develop a more sustainable model. As you've previously said, that's, that's not all of it. And there's the funding stream from the council. You mentioned having a single funding stream from the council that would be more stable. Have we had any indication from central as to how viable that would be? And in the shorter term, we've got some funding that's coming to the end, very lifetime in March. And have, has the council managed to find sort of short to medium-term funding to keep the work going?
We haven't done that part of the jigsaw yet, Henry. So that's the next stage to kind of, to kind of look at that. So both the viability and obviously the funding parts that we currently have are, that are identified in that, in that appendix are, are still there. From, I think that problem might be a question to take back to Diana, but that's the next phase of the, of the project that is phase two. So providing everyone's happy with the foundations, then we will start to go and do that work.
And certainly if the council didn't find the funds to continue the work that the team's doing, I think we'd really be shooting ourselves in the foot. So you'd have a full support on that.
Thank you.
So thanks to everybody. Really positive discussion. Colleagues, we have a number of recommendations in front of us. And that is, it is recommended that we agree the principles and foundations of the major events plan, as we've seen in the report. Two, to agree that work should begin formally, to explore the funding mechanisms and council seek on funding models to help the major events plan. To agree that work continues to refine the tenure events pipeline. And agree that we begin meaningful engagement with stakeholders and experts in the field to gain expertise, advice and feedback on the plan and the approach. So those are the recommendations, colleagues. Are we all agreed? Does anybody disagree? In that case, it's unanimously approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And then last but by no means least, colleagues, we have a report on the Multiply Programme. And we have Richard and Sarah here to take. And we have Richard and Sarah here to take us through that. So over to you guys.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, committee, for allowing us to come and talk to you today. So as councillor Smith said, I'm Richard Smith. I'm the head of service for the lifelong learning and skills service and I'm joined by Sarah.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wraith and I'm the Multiplier Operations and Partnership Manager.
So we've prepared a paper for you today to provide an update and I suppose almost a conclusion to the Multiply project, which has been operational internationally and within Sheffield since 20, well, the end of 2022. It comes to a conclusion in, in March 2025, so slightly ahead of time. But I'm keen to give committee an update on our performance in the Sheffield area. Just by way of reminder, and I'm sure committee members are already aware of this, but it's a, it was a three-year project the government launched, as I say, in 2022, funded through the Department for Education and it was one of the, it was the first priority of the UK Shared Prosperity Fund. And within the region, the money comes through South Yorkshire's Merrill Combined Authority and Sheffield, as well as the other three local authorities, receive an allocation from that fund. We're in the final year of the project, as I say, and we want to provide you with some information about the impact that we believe the project's had for Sheffield residents. Within Sheffield, the money that came through came to our service, lifelong learning and skills, and particularly into our family adult community education team. We've got lots of experience in adult education in terms of providing adult skills to the residents of Sheffield. We were inspected last year and the adult education side of the provision was found to be outstanding and lifelong learning overall was good. So we believe that's a good context for the Multiply funding to come in. But we have worked also with colleagues in employment and skills because there is a relationship here with moving people toward the workplace and supporting people in the workplace with their numeracy skills. So it aligns well with our strategic intent within phases and our accountability statement that we have to produce every year to demonstrate our innovative, high-quality learning activities and how we want to improve the life chances of Sheffield adults. The funding wasn't released to local authorities until midway through 2022 and in our case, combined authorities until midway through 2022. So year one is a slight anomaly, it's not a full year. It tended, the intention was for it to run over financial years, so April to March. Actually, we didn't receive any funding in Sheffield until Christmas, so January time. So year one was a, was a three-month year, so to speak, and then year two and year three have been a full year. So that's just worth giving you a bit of context. And we took a decision in Sheffield, because of that limitation and because of the time pressures and the need to have the biggest impact possible, we took a decision to work with the well-established and very strong community learning organisations that we already worked with through adult skills. So we've got a good network of providers in Sheffield, which other authorities don't have in the same way. And so we looked to them in order to bid to work with us on this project. What the stipulation from the department as well was that it mustn't replace any adult skills funding. So we're not looking to produce more maths courses to get people through GCSE or equivalent qualifications. This was very much about foundational work and supporting people with their numeracy skills. And it was also recognising the fact that many people have an aversion to the word maths. I think when we've looked into this, spoken to our residents, spoken to people we work with, we've looked at the research and this was reflected nationally. So we've tended to use numeracy as a hook to hang this on. We've looked at the functionality of the functional side of that, sorry, when it comes to people's daily lives. And we've aligned it with the council outcomes as well. So we know the council is seeking to be a creative and prosperous city, full of culture, learning and innovation. We've heard about culture this morning. Learning is absolutely central as well in terms of what we want. And we believe we've delivered on that. We've seen 3,000 individual enrolments across the three-year period. We'll break that down for you. We've worked with 16 delivery partners, so that's community organisations across Sheffield. And we've seen half of those learners have it, well, make an initial move straight into further learning with us. Longer term, other people will make other moves as well, but that initial move into further learning is a real positive too. We also align with the council outcome around value and diversity, supporting wellbeing. As I say, many small trusted local organisations that we've worked with, a wide reach into some of the more deprived areas or areas of multiple deprivation in Sheffield, that's been one of our key focuses. And as I say, rather than talking about maths, we've talked about household budgeting, sustainable living, helping people manage their household bills, energy use, learning how to cook on a budget, as well as supporting adults to work with their children in, helping them understand how their children are taught mathematics at school and supporting them with their homework, for example. And then there were links that we made with the cost of living hub as well. So another big initiative in the Sheffield area, working through, working out of Sheffield markets on a weekly basis, that was engaging people just through footfall really and talking to people about their wellbeing and supporting them to think about using numeracy or developing their numeracy skills in order to help manage their, the cost of living crisis that a number of people were facing or many people are facing. We also align with the council outcome around sustainability and being a city on the move. We, we've got courses that look particularly at green initiatives. So this isn't about fitting soda panels, this is very much at the, the initial intervention, helping people understand how their own work and their own household management can impact on sustainability. So cooking on a budget, I've mentioned, energy use and then recycling, upcycling, just making better use of the resources they already have. So with all of that in mind, I think you've seen in the paper that we've shared two infographics, which I'm not just going to read to you, but the infographics are just a nice, we think a nice, easy way to introduce you to the stats in terms of the numbers of people we worked with in year one, the diversity of those people, both in terms of age, in terms of gender, in terms of ethnicity. So I think that speaks for itself and there's similar infographic which we've got for year two and obviously inevitably we'll have one for year three when we reach the end of year three. I think particularly pleasing on the year two infographic, Sarah will touch on this as well, is the feedback we're getting from the individuals that have engaged on the project. So very high percentages of people saying that they were satisfied with the courses and they felt they'd developed their skills. We weren't able to do that in year one simply because of the speed at which we had to begin the delivery, but in year two, the information came through loud and clear and it's coming through in year three as well. And again, there are a couple of, I'm stealing yours, but there are a couple of case studies for year two and for year three, which we've given you hyperlinks to in the paperwork. So if you haven't had a chance to see them, I think they speak really strongly to the voices of people and the impact that it's had on their lives. And speaking of impact, as I say, 3,000 overall, in year one and year two, there were 2,100 interventions. There are people that engage on multiple courses, it's not individuals necessarily, but I think we found that, I haven't got the stat with me, but I think on average, people engage with just less than two of our short courses. Very much, as I say, we're not trying to replicate what we do already. This is short interventions, bite size, and that seems, that seems to work very well. And so far in year three, we've seen further 941 people enrol on these short courses and then 922 engagements. And by engagements, this is where I talk about being in the markets and other parts of Sheffield and doing very direct but short interventions around numeracy, which is how we get people onto our courses. At this point, I'll hand over to Sarah to talk about how we want the impact to continue and move forward.
Thank you. So I think, you know, it's been a privilege for me to work on this project because it's been so impactful for everyone. You'll just have to excuse me because I can't see you very well, but I can't see the writing either. So just move the glasses down. But I think, you know, sort of being able to bring this approach and this bite-size model, it is trailblazing. It is something different to what we've done before. And as Richard said, you know, maths, definitely not. Numeracy, maybe, I'll think about that. So we've been really lucky in the way it's been received by our residents and the feedback has been, you know, really positive. 96% have given us positive feedback over, you know, just this year alone. So what we're wanting to look at doing is, obviously the funding will discontinue, it's a real risk for us and we're very, you know, we're very challenged by that, I think, as well, just because of the positive impact it's had across Sheffield and with residents. But we do want to look at how we can then embed that into our adult skills fund using tailored learning and sort of looking at this bite-size unitized model to actually get people engaged and give them the confidence to then build the skills and move forward. And that's what's been really impactful about Multiply overall. It's that confidence that it's given people. People have come in, realised, actually, this is not as scary as I thought this was. And that's made a real difference to people. So obviously, we went out to tender and that's how we got our subcontracting organisations on board. It's been, you know, so beneficial to be collaborating with all partners across the city. What we've done is we've been able to co-produce curriculums. So strategically, I designed the curriculums based on the interventions from the guidance from DFE. However, what we've seen is that they've actually built in the diversity and characteristics of the participants into the courses. So cooking on a budget in Manor looks very different to cooking on a budget in Burnbreeve. And that's been a real benefit to our residents and the people who've been engaging with Multiply. Everything's been tailored. We've seen people at pre-entry level and we've seen people up to level two who wanted to revisit some of the skills. So it's actually captured people in such a wide range of audiences. As you'll see from the case studies, year two case studies, really impactful, they came at the end of year two. Year three, we've got a case study booklet that we've put in place because what we're really trying to do is champion this and get people aware before the funding ends so that we can help to influence this with DFE. So, you know, sort of part of a national forum as well. And we're all trying to champion for this to continue and showing the impact that this has had across the board and including the infographics. So the infographics, I put those in place to be able to show a snapshot really quickly what we'd achieved. I think what we've been trying to do as well with our partners, we've been trying to have numerous opportunities for them to collaborate and co-design, but also we've had good practice sessions where they've shared their thoughts, what they're learning from Multiply, with them being able to embed that and change things for year two. We've also taken part in collaborative quality assurance, so it's very transparent. They're actually working with others to see what other people are doing and showing that good practice, which has been really beneficial. We've also had really strong partnerships with National Numeracy. So that's meant we've been able to run collaborative sessions like the Big Number Natta, which was also recorded by Simca and has gone out on their page as well to publicise Multiply Sheffield and what we've been doing. So that was great. I've also taken part in a case study for National Numeracy about how we've developed number confidence because as part of Multiply, funding's been available for people to train as numeracy champions. So we've been encouraging all our community partners to take part in that, but also if they've got any other community development workers or volunteers, they've also been taking part in that as well. So we've had over 50 people train as numeracy champions across Sheffield from this free training, which has been really beneficial and that's helped as well for them to tailor and structure the curriculums better. And as well, we've also been shortlisted for prestigious smart working live award. So I've nominated us for building collaborative communities for the awards. I was actually approached by somebody who was a representative for that government award to say, I think your project would be really good for this. So we put in the nomination and we have been successfully shortlisted and we found out on the 22nd, sorry, 21st of November, if we've been successful. But actually, when you look in that category, that our project being part of that is quite big. So yeah, we're really pleased with that. And I think as well, the additional benefit, as Richard mentioned, about the cost of living hub and working with JCP, we actually have a presence in the job centres across the city to go and talk about Multiply, but that helps people with budgeting, energy bills, looking at those sort of everyday cost of living aspects that our courses can help with. Just again, to go back to equality, diversity, inclusion, representation was critical when we started to develop Multiply. So very early on, I didn't want to use stock photos for any of our marketing or any of our leaflets. So all the people that are on there are Multiply learners who have been in our classes. And I think that's had a really good representation for people to say, oh, actually, this is for me. And that's made a big difference. Two thirds of learners who have engaged have been female. Nationally, there is research by National Numeracy that females have, females and girls have higher skills gaps. So they're actually doing a piece of research on the gender divide and they've got a gender task force who is looking at that as well. But what we've tried to do is we are trying to look at how we've engaged males. And if Multiply funding was to continue while we're, you know, looking at the model moving forward, we would be looking at some of these curriculums that males have engaged with to try and target males in certain areas and get people more involved. And that's a new in there as well. Funding wise, obviously the funding does end in March 2025. We've been receiving 816,000 per year. In year one, as Richard mentioned, it was really four months by the time we got the funding out. And then we had a 7% clawback, but I think in context, that's actually a job well done because we weren't sure we could actually get it out to our community providers in that time scale. But because they've trusted and worked with us and we've had that transparent relationship, we did get people on board and that made a huge difference. In year two, we exceeded our contract value. And again, that's for the great work that our contract holders have been doing. So we were then able to receive that funding from Simca additional to our allocation, which was then used to fund, well, we paid for the overperformance that our contract holders had done. And then we've been able to retain staff for legacy work moving forward. So critical staff from our operations team and our IAG officer for Multiply will be retained using that funding. And I think we sort of want to look at what's beyond and use everything we've learned throughout this project, including the champion training, as well as sort of being able to look at the prestige that it's brought to the city, you know, through looking at the difference that it's made to people through our case studies. But it is very much about the residents and what they want and what our community partners will be looking for. So we'll be doing a consultation with them to talk about which bits of this we can retain and them building tailored learning moving forward.
Okay, yeah, so that's our presentation. So hopefully we can take some questions as well.
Thank you. Before I open it up to questions, a couple of brief things. Congratulations on being shortlisted for that award. And I just want to call out one thing from those infographics. A 92-year-old wanted to improve their numeracy skills. A Sheffielder, 92, got off their backside and decided to do something about it. I don't know how they got on, but that is proper Sheffield. So if in the unlikely event they're listening, good on you. So, Tony.
Sorry. That's why, I'm sorry, sorry. That's why I wanted to include the age groups in there because I actually met that individual and they came along with the family. So there were younger family members with that 92-year-old talking about it and they were showing them about how they were, they did maths when they were at school and how they did it, perhaps in, you know, it's mental maths, but them writing it down and transcribing it's a, yeah, really impactful.
Tony.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think I've, I think I've raised this before at a previous meeting. Whereabouts are these hubs or wherever you do, where you're working at? Are they spread across the city? Because I know in my ward, I've had problems where people have wanted to go on these courses and not being able to get on because of the distance they have to travel to get to the nearest point and with bus, not only, not only fares, but with transport in general, not being able to make connections and one thing and another. I just wondered whereabouts in the south east, you have got any hubs that you could get, I could signpost people to. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, we've, we've been working with community partners across the city, but some of them have got more of a localised approach. However, we have had new contract holders who have come on board who don't actually have a premise, so are able to facilitate any regional demand that we've got. So we are happy to travel to wherever we need to and what we've tried to do is sort of then gain a library access or somewhere in a community venue. But because of the commissioning model, we are trying to just make sure we've got as big a reach as we possibly can. But yeah, any sort of ones we, you know, sort of demand we've been picking up, we've been trying to like sort of move into those areas and migrate into those areas, but we've still got time. So, you know, we can pick up on any area demand that we've, we've still got in these next four months.
So where is the nearest hub, where is the nearest hub in the south east?
In the south east? I think we've, sorry, we've got the demographics here, I haven't, let's have a look.
From a delivery point of view, which is the organisation that we've got that's closest to them, we've got, we're working with organisations in Manor and Castle, but I think further, so yeah, the Manor and Castle Development Trust have delivered a lot in, not just in their area, but in and around that part of the city. I think we could perhaps, we've got some breakdown of the demographics by ward as well actually, so we could probably get some more detail for you if you wish around, around your ward particularly, but we'll do, yeah. I think the other point, when it comes to adult skills more generally, and I think in response to a previous question on this, there is recourse to public funds for support when it comes to travel as well, which I don't think residents are always aware of. So I'm talking about bus passes and et cetera. So that's hopefully a way of breaking down barriers. For the very short interventions on Multiply, that's a bit more tricky because we're not talking about long 12-week courses. But certainly when people move on to adult skills courses, then that absolutely But certainly when people move on to adult skills courses, then that absolutely is something we want to support with and perhaps we need to think about how promote that so that residents, if there isn't something on their doorstep, they can quite easily get there and have the funds, bus fare reimbursed.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you for that. So mindful of time, colleagues, we're going to go Henry, Ibi, Barbara and then finish with Denise, if that's okay? So Henry.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report and all the work that's gone into this. And congratulations again on being shortlisted. It's annoying that the council does so much good work with the subject of these ephemeral funding streams that spring up and die down. But in terms of the lasting legacy of the programme, the 58 community numeracy champions that have been trained, do they have the confidence and support to sort of run with what they're doing and outlast the end of the programme in March?
Yeah, I would hope they would. I think we've had a number of our numeracy champions who actually have been advocates for National Numeracy to promote the training further. So I do feel that they now feel that they've got the confidence. Because I think, you know, obviously some of them are ESOL specialists, they're not maths specialists, but that was what we wanted to look at for part of Multiply and developing those skills because there's a national shortage of maths tutors and so we wanted to look at that. So I do think that legacy will continue. And I think once we look at the strategy around this and procuring it, I think we will have more agencies who've got more confidence to do that than before.
Another positive as well, and there are some spin-off positives from this, we've worked with community organisations for many years, but through Multiply, some very small community organisations that we hadn't previously worked with, that hadn't previously bid to work with us, that actually from a financial sustainability point, were quite vulnerable, have been sustained by Multiply initially. But what's been positive is they then have the confidence to then bid for further work through adult skills. So some of those small organisations will continue to work with us beyond the end of Multiply. So the champions that they've developed in their teams and their services will likewise continue to embed maths and numeracy into, like you say, ESOL or other areas of work that they're doing with us.
Brilliant. Ibi, then Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. Once again, congratulations for being shortlisted for an award. To me, it doesn't come as a surprise because if you look at the performance data, it's really good, really positive. You have excellent satisfaction rate, excellent retention rate, excellent recommendation rate. I was glad to see people from different communities and indeed different age group benefiting from the Multiply project. So I'd like to commend the work of everyone associated with this project. Well done, thank you.
Don't know if that was a question, no, do you want to come back on that at all or should we move on?
Just to reciprocate the thanks, we have an advisory board that meets every term and councillor Ullah, councillor Smith, I know you help through that. So more than happy if there's anything through that that we need to be sharing with the wider committee to do that in a future committee as well, about performance.
Thank you. Barbara.
Thank you, Chair. And yeah, congratulations. Now, first of all, my ignorance, what does L L D D stand for in the infographics?
Apologies. It's where learners have disclosed they've got learning difficulty or disability.
Right, I assumed it was something like that, but I wasn't too sure. And the second thing is, I mean, our ex-maths teacher worked a lot with the non-achievers post-16, so I really do understand a lot of the issues you are faced with. So well done, excellent. You say sort of that you're using to develop courses aimed at re-engagement and that education and hopefully employment. Do you have any evidence today? I mean, it's very early on in what you've been delivering, but any evidence to show how many re-engage, going back into education or moving into work on the back of this? And this is not a criticism because I don't think you'd have it at this stage, knowing the sorts of demographics you'd be working with, but I'd be curious, thank you.
Yeah, we did actually have 49% who moved into volunteerid employment or sort of part-time work from year two. So we were able to evidence that, that we're doing without distance travelled. So we do seem to, and we do have some internal data, but it is just internal data at the moment that people are moving into digital, they're moving into maths qualifications or they're moving into employability skills from Multiply. So we are tracking that at the moment.
Brilliant, thank you, because I couldn't see it on the infographics. Whether I, employment status, I thought it was what they'd come in with. Does that mean that sort of this status is, includes what you were just saying?
Some people will have come in with that status and that's why we've just got to make sure we quantify it. And then some people have moved forward. So when we look at it for year two, it's people who've moved forward and progressed.
I think if I could just add as well, I think the journey that a learner takes is obviously not linear. And so some of the data that we've been tracking is a bit linear and we're trying to move away from that. So for example, the language of adult education is the entry level, the pre-entry level, the entry level, level one and level two, level two being an equivalent GCSE. So tracking somebody, you might expect them to move from pre-entry to entry to level one to level two and of course they don't. So particularly if they've got skills gaps. So what we are working hard to produce is some data that shows how individuals have moved through provision. So it might be that somebody started with Multiply and then moved on to a community learning course and then to an adult learning course and then took a step down and moved towards learning how to work in the early years sector, for example. So as time goes on, as we, as we develop that data source, then I'm hopeful to be able to come back with something that can't tell every story, but tells some generalities about that.
And leading on from there, sort of you said that some of them did voluntary sort of training in that. And is it because they then realised they could actually volunteer? Or were these organisations who would accept people because they were helping them with the training?
Yeah, I mean, if I can give an example of one of our learners who've come through Multiply at the Furnival. A lady came on to the course, did Multiply in year one. She's actually now become a member of their paid staff team and is supporting Multiply classes. So it's just, you know, it's had that major impact. And again, you know, sort of at Furnival Community Hub, we had a learner come in who thought that they got very low-level maths skills, but actually they're working at level one level. But because of the confidence to come into a Multiply class, they actually then got signposted on to a high-level qualification quite quickly. So some people are taking longer, but then other people are actually realising that the skills gap's not as great and this is not as scary and they're moving on quite quickly. So yeah, there have been some of our, you know, good news stories and case studies as well.
Thank you. And finally, Denise.
Thank you, Chair. Barbara's touched on a few more things, but I've even had a learning centre in Burley years ago. I witnessed how, you know, how beneficial it was to the community to have these sort of courses. And they weren't just maths, they were IT skills and even learning them how to use an iPad or a tablet. And there used to be 80-odd-year-olds coming along to them. And so I've witnessed the beneficial impact of this and the mental health, you know, how they're getting them out of the house, the social impact of it as well. And isolate, you know, cut through isolation and gives them confidence to carry on once they've started. So I do hope that it can continue. I do hope you get some more funding and get it continued. But my question is, how do you reach the people? Do you get some referrals? Or I know you mentioned the D W P Employment Centre, perhaps you sit there, but do you get referrals from anywhere else?
Yeah, we do, we're getting a large range of referrals from across the city. And we do know we've got some gaps. So obviously, Burley, we've got a gap in Burley, we've also got a gap in Woodhouse. So we've been speaking to someone there about utilising the new centre in Woodhouse because we'd love to be able to get a foothold in there, not just for Multiply, but also for adult learning as well. So those conversations are happening and also in Crystal Peaks. So we are trying to, you know, utilise and get services in different areas where we know there are gaps. But I think as well, it's about looking at, sorry, just repeat your question again. Sorry, I started talking, I lost train.
Referrals and...
Referrals, yeah. Sorry, so with the Cost of Living Hub connection, that's been great for us because what they've done is they've invited us to all their citywide events. So actually, that's got us in places that we may not have got on our own. So that's been great because then the referrals have come through. So we have a central Multiply inbox who are I A G, I A G officer monitors and he's regularly giving callbacks. So, you know, we've talked to so many people, but yeah, the referrals are still coming through. And that's why we've been so successful in year three. So within four months of year three, we'd already spent 80% of our budget. So I've had to go back to Simca and replan and say, actually, I don't need the engagement, what I need is courses. So again, we're, you know, keeping that relationship with Simca to make sure we're getting the very best out of all this funding that we can use, you know, so that it's supporting people. Because what we don't want is for the last three months, there not being any provision. There's engagement but no provision, but obviously because we're coming to an end, we've had to re-profile that and we'll look at what's necessary.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm going to draw a line under it there, colleagues. We have two recommendations in front of us. First of all, to note the progress made to deliver numeracy programmes to adults within Sheffield using the Multiply programme to overcome barriers to learning. And also to note the plans to maintain the legacy of this three-year programme when it comes to an end in March 2025 by using learning about what's worked to embed that in our adult learning programmes. Is the, are those two things we can agree on? Okay, I'm not seeing anybody disagreeing, that's unanimous. Thank you very much for coming and thank you, colleagues, for coming to the meeting today. One of the most positive ones we've had so far. Thank you very much.